Procedure. Individuals wishing to address the body may do so on agenda items appearing before us this evening. We ask that all the persons acknowledge, first acknowledge you before you come to the podium, in which if you do get acknowledged, to come to the podium and introduce yourself for the record. Item five on our agenda this evening is reading of the minutes of the previous meeting held on February 18th, attachment number one. Alder Person, what are your wishes regarding that item?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the previous meeting.
A motion by Coath, is there a second? Oh, I'm not be able, okay, I just can't see the screen. There we go. We got a motion, a second. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? See none, all in favor? I guess please cast your ballots, sorry.
Motion carried, six ayes, zero nays.
Move on to item number six, which is my report. Good evening, councilmembers, staff, and those here who are watching from home. We clearly are in unprecedented times in our community, in our country, and in our world. Here in Wisconsin Rapids, the health and well-being of all of our employees and residents is our top priority. To that end, I pledge to continue regular communication in times such as these as updates become available. On Sunday, a positively tested case of travel-related coronavirus was identified in the Wisconsin Rapids area. We keep them and their family in our thoughts as they recover. We want residents to remain calm and take steps to ensure the safety of themselves and their families. We also encourage residents to identify a household plan of action. We must all do our part to be prepared with the resources necessary to prevent the spread of the virus, and yesterday I declared a state of emergency. The purpose is not to incite panic, but to inform you we're taking steps to mitigate the spread of the COVID-19 coronavirus. Declaration will open the door for us to receive state and federal aid or resources should they become necessary in our efforts. As this pandemic has affected our employees in many ways, I've implemented a policy regarding temporary paid leave for employees who will need leave, whether it be for the employee being ill, a family member being ill, a department being closed, or the need for childcare. This declaration and action is on our agenda this evening. Since last week, departments have been coordinating internally and with other community institutions to develop plans to reduce the spread of COVID-19, as well as to make sure residents receive the best possible treatment should they become, come into contact. This virus-riddled hospital has developed a surge plan for screening of potential cases of COVID-19, and again, this evening, we remind individuals to not call 911 or visit the emergency room without first calling their provider or the aspiras hotline at 1-844-568-0701, or the Marshfield Clinic hotline at 1-877-998-0880. I've made contact with the major stores in our community, and for the time being, they will continue to receive regular shipments of supplies to stock their stores, though there will be constraints with some items. And we, again, remind folks to be reasonable when they're making purchases as to not negatively impact the supply of things for others. Situation has caused many, many questions, and we continue to monitor the actions of the federal government regarding sick and paid leave and the ramifications facing many in our community. Situation, as you can imagine, has already impacted many of our small businesses, and we're working with our chamber to continue to identify resources for their assistance. And as of this afternoon, effective 5:00 PM already today, bars and restaurants must limit their premises to pickup or drive-through at this time. Waterworks and Lighting Office is also closed to the public presently, and we encourage their customers to use one of the many alternative payment methods. And also important to note, there is a moratorium in place to suspend disconnect activities. Our municipal library is closed until further notice, and they ask that you do not return materials while the library is closed. They'll be extending due dates and waiving fines, so you will not incur any charges. For general questions about the COVID-19 coronavirus, please call 211. Above all, remind folks to be kind and considerate, and check on those who may be considered among the vulnerable populations. Effective tomorrow, the Centralia Center's Lowell Center programming, so the programming at the Senior Center, will be suspended, as well as the Meals on Wheels program. The home-delivered meals will continue, but the community congregate meal site that over 50 people receive meals every day will be closed until further notice. They're also encouraging people to call the ADRC should they wish to request a home-delivered meal. In an effort to implement further mitigation strategies effective tomorrow, public interaction with city offices will be limited until further notice, as outlined. City clerk, police, and municipal court offices will remain open to carry out their duties. City staff in the Assessment, Community Development, Finance, Fire, Public Works Divisions, Mayor's Office, Lowell Center, Senior Resource Center, and HR departments will be closed to the public and only conduct business via phone, email, and mail. External activities will continue, and staff will remain working in those departments during this time. We encourage tax payments to be mailed or dropped off in the box outside City Hall. And as was mentioned at the beginning of our meeting, we do have a declaration on our agenda following this update, and encourage the consideration by the request of Alder Person Rayom to postpone the agenda that's before us this evening. In other matters, Kyle Kearns, our Community Development Director, started last Thursday. Kyle, if you want to give a wave for the audience, we welcome him as talent and experience as he provides leadership to his department in the Community Development Office. Recently, city staff and I met with the Wisconsin DOT to discuss situation with A Street and future maintenance or replacement activities as it relates to the federal build grant opportunity. Of course, with the situation, we're on, it's uncertain whether that deadline will be extended, and at this point, no information has been shared on that front. In the category of attended, hosted, or participated, planning continues for the Blossom Fest and other summertime activities. Recently, I read to elementary and pre-K students for Read Across America Day. Also attended the Healthy People Wood County Summit where the Community Health Improvement Plan activities for the upcoming years were released. Participated in an economic development panel for the Chamber of Leadership Program. Youth Council, Parks and Recreation Commission toured the Aquatic Center project and the great progress that's being made on that development. And participated in, finally, in Central Wisconsin Days, and a county economic roundtable discussing the many developments happening here and around the county. Courage individuals wishing to hear my monthly radio show to tune in tomorrow morning at WFHR or live, the livestream broadcast from their website. And that concludes my report. Item seven, which is on our amended agenda this evening, is Consider a Resolution Regarding My Emergency Declaration from March 16th, 2020, attachment number six. I'll go to Attorney Schill to discuss what was handed out this evening, as well as to walk us through the declaration process.
Right, so what I had handed out is a more recent proposed resolution regarding that emergency declaration. That's based on some guidance that we received today from the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, as well as a sample emergency declaration that was provided to us. So what the mayor had done pursuant to Chapter 323 yesterday was to declare a state of emergency and did order certain personnel actions in terms of paid leave and travel. And so that was contained in the, in the original declaration. And the revised one that I provided to you, additionally, something that's been recommended, obviously, I would recommend ratification of the mayor's declaration, but also to have a mechanism to continue to hold meetings. This is, as I said, something that we talked about today with the League of Wisconsin Municipalities and with guidance from the Attorney General's Office that was recently given regarding the ability of the council to continue to meet and other subunits of, of the council, any other standing committees or committees, or commissions or boards. To, the guidance given is that you can meet remotely, you can each be at a different location as long as what you're hearing and seeing is what all of the other members are hearing and seeing, it's simultaneous, and then as long as we can provide access to the public remotely. So that might look like a couple of different, could be done in a couple of different ways. We're still working on that, and there are a number of different software or platforms or whatever. You call them, GoToMeeting, or Google Hangout, trying to determine what might be the best in the event, well, based on the guidance from, regarding social distancing and, and groups, groups of people not exceeding 10, not recommended. That's what this, this emergency declaration would give you the specific ability to, to do that. How that will look like, as I said, we're still working through that. We just got the guidance from the Attorney General recently, as well as the guidance from the league, so I would highly recommend that, that be included in the emergency declaration, your ability to do so. I would say the, nearly every municipality, there was probably 100 city attorneys on the phone call that I was on this morning. I, I think, to a person, they are all adopting something like that if they did not already have something. Although the exigency of this and the, the nature of the pandemic is such that what, what we're recommending now probably isn't something that we could adopt as a normal way of doing business, but as the Attorney General has said, and the league has given guidance on, with the circumstances as they are now, that is a, considered to be a reasonable way for the public to participate. So it might be a video conference with the ability of the, the public to, to call in, to hear the audio, or to somehow get in through, to see a video. As I said, I'm not exactly sure how that's going to work. There might be an issue when we get to a point where if there are public hearings where the public actually needs to participate and respond, and so we're gonna need to make sure that we're providing for that. It might be that we just don't have public hearings for a month or two, but it's all pretty fluid and changes by, by the hour. But I don't know if anyone has any questions on the, the emergency declaration as it's, as it's written. It's, it's pretty much the standard one that's been circulating amongst city attorneys this afternoon. It was a little, it's different than the one that I had originally provided yesterday because I wasn't really quite sure what the guidance was going to be on the open meetings and what additional things we might request in terms of specific approval or action, so.
Alder Person Kubashak, you're first.
Thank you. Ms. Attorney, City Attorney, toward the end here, it says, "The period of declaration shall be as long as the emergency conditions exist or are likely to exist." I'd like to amend that to, "This shall extend to the next council meeting and the next regularly scheduled council meeting, and can be renewable at that time."
Is that a, we're gonna say something Attorney Schill? So was that a motion? No, it was just a...
It, it could be a motion if no one else has any other, I guess, comments on, or any other amendments to it.
Just kind of threw it on the floor, potentially, we've got some requests to speak, so we'll go through those, and then we'll, maybe somebody will make a motion, incorporate your suggestion. Alder Person Blazer, you're next.
Thank you. I have a few questions. So the, so I'm looking at the paid sick leave policy, the emergency paid sick leave. So how's the 80 hours work? Is it 80 hours on top of what they have, or do they have to use their current leave before the 80 hours, or is it 80 hours first, then?
As it is written, this is an additional paid leave separate from any leave that they currently have. So it is up to the employee whether they wish to request this leave, or whether they wish to use other leave first, or intermittently use their leave they have now and then, so, right, it's an additional, an additional leave, separate leave.
So the, okay, as long as they have the choice, or they could use that first, or, and I have another concern is with the item one, employee who's self-isolated because of the virus. And my concern comes with public safety and DPW because they don't have the option really to work from home. I know it outlines 80 hours, but for myself, I, I'm looking, see if council would support. I think they should be, leave should be covered until the duration that they're no longer self-isolated, whether it be through a doctor's note or something like that. I just think that we need to, our public safety people need to make sure they're covered. Because this could, they, they could be longer than 80 hours. I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but...
And would that be a circumstance where they would, so if they're, they're choosing to self-isolate, but they haven't tested positive?
I'm sorry, they, if they're, if they test positive and they have to be isolated, I feel our public safety and DPW should be, not have to worry about sick leave until they're released from that isolation by a doctor.
I'll go to Attorney Schill, but I believe the guidance regarding a positive test case would then be covered by the existing paid sick leave, or the...
Right, that would be a serious health condition, so then their, their six-month leave would kick in, plus you might be speaking about an instance where it's a worker's comp situation. So, so, okay, so the instance, you're saying it's for number one only, then?
Correct. You know, I think with the other items in there, most of, you know, if you're sick, obviously you stay home. You know, I think 80 hours for a family member, or, or a child, not, I think the other items would be, that 80 hours is pretty fair, but I think if somebody, especially people that don't have the option to work from home, public safety and DPW, because we still need them out there, that, that should, as long as they're covered, and they don't have to use their vacation and their accrued sick, or they don't have accrued sick time, their sick time that they currently have is that long as they, they are still receiving a sick leave benefit during the duration that they're gone. From time they're diagnosed, they have to be quarantined till the time they're released.
Right. But if they're, if they're actually on a sick leave, then they're not going to have remote work. You're either, I mean...
Right.
So...
Correct.
So this would be time when they're not sick, but they're not working?
No, this would be, I'm only, I guess I'm concerned about employees that are in police, fire, and DPW that contracted, have, are diagnosed, have to be self-quarantined, or they have to be quarantined, whether in their house or wherever, and they're not able to, you know, we have 80 hours, but if it's, if it goes longer than 80 hours, I think they need to be covered.
And that would be the, in the instance where the, the, just kind of like that, see what your, your point is, right? And this would be the interim, kind of if they have to withdraw from employment because they want to protect themselves and protect their coworkers and others. But your point, though, I think is the, is the second, the second, the existing FMLA, FMLA policy that the city would have, but...
Yeah, I don't want them coming to work if they're sick, so, or if they're been diagnosed.
Certainly, and that would be the major medical condition, but Sue, maybe you want to verify that to be sure. That was my understanding, that this was sort of the precursory to being diagnosed, a positive case. So in the case where somebody is unsure, test results are, what, eight days on average, I think, right now for some of the tier-two and tier-three cases? So those folks who want them to be isolated, and our current leave policy wouldn't allow for them to be paid for that time until they get the diagnosis of the positive case.
So if, if myself, if I'm working in law enforcement, I feel sick, I'm waiting for test results, I can use the 80 hours. Once the test results come in and I have to be quarantined at home, then I would be covered under the long-term, the sick month, the, that, whatever that policy is called, the long-term sickness or long-term leave?
That's my understanding, and we'll just verify that that text would be in there, and I...
I think, not to leave out any of the other employees, but I think right now we're taking steps that there, we're already pretty much closing City Hall, aside from, you know, probably the clerk's office and some of them, that they'll be allowed to work from home, so they're already kind of self-isolated.
Sure. Well, and at this point, we're not sending people, we're not imposing a work-from-home opportunity. Folks will still have to work, but I see, if, if we get to that level, right, where folks are not allowed to come to work and have to work from home, yeah, but they're, not everybody has that opportunity, as you said. So I think, I guess, yeah, I mean, we should verify that, that point.
I guess my feeling is that's why we have Contingencies Fund, and, you know, we need to make sure they're covered while they're, if they, especially law enforcement and public safeties and DPW, because they have to be out there.
Right. And our policy wouldn't necessarily provide for like an interim, that first quarantine period, right, if their test results aren't back or something like that. Did you have another concern? Others, I'll go to Coath Welsh, she's looking up that.
No, I'm good, thank you.
Alder Person Coath?
No, just seeing, if there's nobody else up here to speak, I would, I was following the conversation back and forth between you and Alder Person Blazer, and to my understanding is that employees that do isolate will be covered under the 80 hours, and then if they are, have positive tests, it will fall under the medical leave from work. So I would make a motion to accept the resolution with the amendment put forth by Alder Person Kubashak, that the effective date would be in, till May, I'll get the council date here. The effective date would be until May 19th, which is the next regularly scheduled council meeting?
April, probably April...
I'm sorry. April 21st, next regularly scheduled council meeting.
So if a motion is second, or a motion, is there a second? Virginsky, sorry, I'm looking at the other, second by Virginsky. Attorney Schill, do you have anything further to say on the question that we're seeking clarification on?
Okay. So I guess I'm, yeah, I'm not understanding how that, that this would not cover that So the first one is self-isolate because of a diagnosis, so that means you've been diagnosed.
I'm sorry. So that's what I'm concerned about, is somebody who's been diagnosed.
So it's available to someone who's been diagnosed?
Right.
And you get 80 hours? So you're saying if it, if it's going to, if you need to be home for longer, see, but a diagnosis of that is going to be a serious medical, a serious health condition, which then kicks in the six months...
Okay.
...of leave for, for public safety, and for DPW, it would be eight weeks, right? I think non-union is eight.
And do they have to exhaust all their other leave prior to that?
Um...
That'd be my other concern.
I think before they, I don't think before the eight, I'd have to look at that. I think, no, they don't, not before the eight, but after the eight, if they want more, before they can ask for a paid leave, they needed, they need to use anything else that they have.
Hopefully, nobody will be sick for eight weeks.
Right.
But...
And, yeah.
I just want to make sure that if they're been diagnosed and they're, have to be at home, and it goes longer than the 80 hours, that they are covered and not losing their other leave for this pandemic.
Yeah, I guess I can't think of a situation where someone that is diagnosed and needs to be home for a period of time, that that wouldn't be a serious health condition that would then kick in their leave, their six, three-month, up to six-month leave.
Okay. I'll go through the speaking order. Oh, Justin's standing up, I don't know if Justin, Justin, want to come to the podium? Make sure the microphone's on, Justin.
Justin Pluus, some of the concerns I have as far as representing the firefighters in the, this leave would be, there's a lot of departments that are looking to go to, or across the state of Wisconsin, that are looking for administrative leave for any firefighter that were to contract the COVID-19, due to the nature that we are being exposed, potentially be exposed to it, going to calls and on a frequent basis. So the additional sick leave is nice, and it's nice to have that, the ability, if you feel like you are exposed, that you can take some leave, but if you were to test positive, I don't think it's fair for the firefighter to have to use their extended sick leave for a job-related, possibly a job-related illness, even though it may be worker's comp, but I don't think the city wants a bunch of worker's comp claims when it could easily handle putting somebody on administrative leave. And then my other question would be, would this also, would this policy even cover police and fire, being that they're represented, and this would be something that would fall under collective bargaining?
All right, if you don't want to, I mean, yeah, this is an additional leave that is outside, you know, I mean, we're not, we're not bargaining this, and I guess if you, whether you want to request it or not, I mean, I guess, it's, it's available to all employees.
Sure. Okay.
So...
That's all, unless anybody has any other questions, I'll be...
Alder Person Blazer?
I would just, I think the administrative leave would be satisfied with the extended serious condition, correct, the sick leave? So it wouldn't, you wouldn't be using your accrued time? You get that six months? Am I correct, then?
Right, but I think he's saying that they shouldn't have to use their six months for it, right?
Right.
Well, yeah. For actually, if I recall correctly, your contract says per illness, whereas the new non-union language is eight weeks per year, so then this would not be counted towards any other illness that you might have, so, and that, if I recall correctly, I don't know if you remember that, so then it would not really be taking anything away from, you know, the ability to use that leave for another event in that year.
Thank you. Alder Person Zerflu?
I wasn't going to talk about it, but I think Justin made a good point there, and Shane, thanks. Far as the motion for the resolution, I'm just a little concerned, like, if we're going to have an expiration date, what if for some reason council can't meet? Then it would just expire. And from what I understand, I think we have to have this, if, if there are going to be any state or federal funds potentially available for like some type of reimbursement, I think we have to have this in effect. So I'm not opposed to like council recertifying this or whatever as we meet. I would just want to make sure that the motion included that, so if for some reason we can't get quorum, because, I mean, maybe we're not feeling well, that, you know, it went, it would recertify as the council meets rather than as a certain, at a certain hard date. And I don't know if there's a way we can work that in the motion, or if you guys are willing to amend it or whatever, or if you even agree.
So Steve's motion was, the clerk's offering, the motion was to, until the next council meets, so basically...
Yeah, the original motion did not have a date, it just said to the next regularly scheduled common council meeting. So if one isn't held in April, it would go to the next one, would be my understanding? Yes?
Well, he threw out May 19th, so I assumed that the intent was to have April 21st.
Right.
But whatever, okay, so if it's, if we're good, then we're good.
So are we...
Well, as I understand, the motion is to have it expire on...
Your motion included a date? Do you want to just leave it as regular, next regularly scheduled council meeting? Are you...
I'm amicable to change the motion to next regularly scheduled council meeting if Bud still wants to uphold his second, then.
But as I understand, Alder Person Zerflu's concern is it would expire then, or is the motion to...
Do you want me to read it?
Sure.
Okay, so the motion, the original idea by Thad was, Alder Person Kubashak was, "The period of this declaration shall extend to the next regularly scheduled council meeting and can be renewable at that time."
I would amend the motion so it says, "Until this declaration would extend until the common council is able to meet again whenever that may be at a future date." And we have quorum.
And Bud, are you willing to second that? Okay. Attorney Schill, do you have any comment?
No, I think that's fine. I mean, it could just basically say till, it's a... No, I think that's fine, I mean, it could just basically say till, it's a period shall be until council terminates it, I mean, if you're going to, you're going to do it at a meeting anyways, but, yeah, I'm fine with that, till the next meeting, I guess then it's, like you always revisit at each meeting, kind of means the same thing, I mean, it's going to have to take action of the council to, to, to probably revoke the declaration, so.
Okay, we've got a motion second, Alder Person Blazer?
Um, I got a couple parts here, the first one, police chief, any concern from your guys, or you haven't had a? What's that?
I've heard nothing from the union.
How about just in general conversation, guys have any?
Not even there.
Okay. And then, Justin, or the fire department. I would think cleaning and dealing with your ambulances is, is that an issue, or are we okay there?
We, we actually have a schedule already set with ambulances and depending upon what they're used during the day, they're getting head to toe every single day.
Oh, okay.
And then a head to toe if they, if they transport anybody that has a positive response, so they're getting, they're getting head to toe every single day.
I didn't know if there was any technology or anything out there that could aid in potentially helping, or?
I have, I have on order two electrostatic disinfectant machines that have been in place in other fire departments, but as you can quite imagine, we are on a list and they're due for end of April, so.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Seeing no further requests to speak, the motion, Alder Person Kubashak?
Sorry about that, thank you, your honor. Just for clarification, I guess I kind of like the idea of some type of administrative leave in terms of it makes it cleaner, there isn't a workers' comp, now, obviously workers' comp claims here and there, whatever, but if it's a case where, I guess, if we're compelling public service and public works to be at work, and there is a concern that someone is showing symptoms, we got to be cognizant that we don't have a lot of people on the bench, if we come down, if there is a case where someone spreads something and now we got 25% down, we're, we're in peril. So if someone, and I don't want abuse being happened, but if someone is coughing and having symptoms, I want them to not be at the workforce, but I, I don't want them punished for it, so if it's a case where if they're, come away from the workforce, quarantine, or whatever you call it, and then they are coronavirus negative, then they'll come back, then the 80 hours or whatever, but if it's a case where they test positive, then administrative leave is going to kick in right now, because we're, we're not going to play games, we're not going to do whatever, it, it's a case where we require them to be at work, workers' comp could do it, but why even have, go through the struggle with that and the potential insurance mod going up and everything else, it's right now, once that period of time they, they test positive, it's administrative leave.
But once they test positive, it's a serious health condition and they get six months of leave, that is the administrative leave that's been negotiated for the firefighter, so DPW would be eight weeks. Right, eight weeks, I keep, I know we just changed that, so I think it's eight weeks. Plus, you know, I'm sorry, the DPW also have sick leave banks, you know, that in addition to their accrued leave, in addition to this leave, there's sick leave banks available to them, but I, yeah, I mean, I certainly understand, but I'm just saying that the diagnosis is going to put them in the FMLA and the serious health condition and would open up their extended leave that's already available to them under, you know, other policies and agreements, but.
I was also going to add the federal law that's being contemplated will also be in effect, the, sort of the crux of this was, federal law is not going to take effect until two weeks, if it were passed today or yesterday or whenever they actually pass it, so we wanted to get something interim in the meantime that we can send people home and not, not have the risk of not being paid or something, so, and I believe the federal legislation as it was drafted will then address, I think, what you're getting at, but I want to make sure we're not forgetting there's a federal provision that's in the, in the works, but we can't rely on it, so that's why we instituted this, this interim.
That actually provide, and I haven't seen the changes that were made today, but that actually provided up to 12, up to 12 weeks of paid leave, although I think it was only at two-thirds, it depended on the reason for, for the leave, but, and that is changing kind of hourly too, and I haven't checked on the latest on that, but that is another leave that might be available.
Other requests to speak? Seeing none, we have a motion, a second on the floor, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six ayes, zero nays.
Uh, the next few items on here, items eight and nine, the finance director advised me that given the state of the market and the current situation that Ehlers and Tim have discussed, and Tim, do you want to speak to this, this item right here?
Sure, yesterday I had a conversation with Phil Costin and David Ferris from Ehlers, who is our financial advisor on the bond sales, and basically with the uncertainty in the market with no visibility, they're recommending to all their clients is, if possible, if cash flow dictates that, they postponed the bond sales, some of the bond sales that they had last week that they had, they were only receiving like one bid, things like that, because even though yields are low, underwriters with the uncertainty in the market just aren't putting in the bids, so they recommended postponement. With that being said, so obviously we did not go to market today to request those bids. Now we have, in my opinion, we have a couple different options of what we can do, we can postpone the sale to the regularly scheduled April council meeting, third Tuesday in, in April, or what I would recommend is, and if you remember last year when we did our bond sales, in that bond sale, we had a parameters resolution, which basically, by adopting that resolution, you delegate to, and actually last year's resolution was either to, to meet the finance director or the mayor to accept bids on behalf of the city for, for a bond sale, and it gives us the flexibility to kind of wait out the market, see, and based on Ehlers' recommendation, kind of set a sell date, and basically what that parameters resolution do lays out, these are the parameters in which a bid can be accepted and that we would accept the lowest bid, lowest true interest cost bid. So if we were going to do a parameters resolution, obviously we would have to adopt that, we don't have the resolution obviously ready today, but we'd have to adopt that maybe at a special council meeting, and depending kind of how things go, if we can do that remotely, or if we're going to be doing finance and public works on April 7th, it could be something where we have a special council meeting to adopt that parameters resolutions, if that is the option that you guys agree tonight to go with, or we can just postpone the sale to the regularly scheduled meeting in April.
Alder Person's questions or discussion on that, on those comments as it relates to items eight and nine? Alder Person Blazer, you're first.
I guess I'm, I'm fine with the finance director's recommendation to do with the parameters.
To refer a, an item for consideration to establish parameters?
Is that?
Yeah.
Parameters resolution, okay. Got a motion by Blazer to refer a parameters resolution to a to be scheduled meeting, whether it's the, I'll just say to be scheduled at this point. Motion by Blazer, second by Zerflue, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six ayes, zero nays.
Thank you, item 10 is consider a resolution ratifying the Alexander Field Southwood County Airport Commission petition for state airport development dated, dated January 2nd, 2020. I see Jeremy's here in the audience with any questions, this petition was slightly modified from the commission's petition last year for six-year, for the six-year petition, I don't have it in front of me to read it unfortunately, I just put it off the agenda tonight, but I guess, Alder Persons, are there any, is there anything to discuss, or any questions or items worth discussing on this item? Otherwise I'd entertain a motion if there's a wish to do so.
I'll make said motion.
Motion to approve by Kellogg, is there a second? Second by Zerflue, are any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, five ayes, one nay.
Thank you, item 11 is Alder Person Coath's motion to renew the common council's previous consideration of the Southwood County Airport Commission's petition for direct annexation by unanimous approval of the Alexander Field Airport Terminal and surrounding property to the city of Wisconsin Rapids. Alder Person Coath requested this item, I'll go to you first.
Your honor, I request that this item be postponed until it's, be able to be taken up by the full council.
Motion to postpone until?
This item can be addressed by the full council.
Motion to postpone until it can be addressed by the full council, is there a second? Second by Zerflue? Are there any requests to speak? Alder Person Kubashak?
I guess I don't want to, I guess, split hairs, with your motion, technically we are the full council, maybe the proper thing would be to the next regularly scheduled council meeting, or next time that the council meets, you know, in, in light, because this is a full council in theory.
Interpret the full council members being present maybe is?
I'll amend, I'll amend the verbiage until we have a regularly scheduled council meeting with all members present.
Alder Person Coth, I have the motion, I'll go with the second, any further requests to speak? Jeremy? Oh, I want to recognize Jeremy, Alder Person Blazer?
Good evening, excuse me, good evening, folks, I'm Jeremy Sickler, the airport manager. I'm sure you're all aware of this, but I just want to remind you that the engineer and the contractor have both alerted us of a date that beyond which the, the timing of the project and the cost of the project are going to continue to rise because of the delays and the availability of contractors, as the project moves on, there's already one, one item that was not completed last fall, that was, that should have been, had it been annexed last fall, it would have been completed last fall, we're paying that contractor another mobilization fee to come back this spring to complete that project. If, excuse me, and again, beyond April 1st, those costs will continue to rise and the, and the finish date of the project will be delayed, so, thank you.
Any further requests to speak? Seeing none, the motion is to postpone to another regularly, or to another council meeting, the full council, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, five ayes, one nay.
Thank you, item 12 obviously is not pertinent for this, item 13 is to consider scheduling a council meeting on a date before the April 21st reorganizational meeting, and if you want to speak to that, then I'll.
Right, this is actually Alder Person Reom has made this referral in the past, and after last year, he, I remember he specifically said that we needed to make sure that the council was aware of how this works, so there'll be the election on April 7th, and then we will have a new council, one way or the other, on April 21st, so the committees generally will meet maybe April 7th, April 14th, but then the new, if, if we have a council meeting on April 21, that will be with the new council, and Alder Person, Alder Person Reom always felt like the old council should, should wrap up those items from the committee, the standing committees, prior to the new council taking their seats on April 21, that cannot happen on the same, on April 21, because as of 12:01 a.m. on April 21, the old council does not have any authority and are no longer elder persons anymore, so that would have to be at a time between the committee meetings and before the April 21 council meeting, I don't know, I mean, that's kind of, I hope I accurately explained his feelings on it, I know last year it does not look, I, I think this was an item and it did not, we did not have that meeting, it was, the, the new council did take, take up the items from the old council standing committees, so it, but we thought we should put it on again, just to make sure that everyone was aware of how it would work if we did not specifically set another council meeting in April, so I guess it's up to you of how you want to proceed.
Alder Persons, Alder Person Kubashak, you're first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I remember Tom mentioned this, Mr. Reo mentioned this last year after the meeting, and I think he had brought it up two years ago, this is one thing that I was, I don't want to say adamantly opposed, but I, I thought that I had pretty good reason for it, is that the last two weeks are a lame duck session, unfortunately, that's what happens, that's what happens in politics, that's what happens at the state level, that's what happens at the federal level, if the new council wants to continue with the advisory recommendations from each of the committees, that's great, that's cool, but they were elected, the new council was elected for any reason, maybe no reason, but I don't think that the new council has any obligation to continue every single advisory recommendation from any of the committees, so it, if, if it's a good idea, I'm sure that the new eight people on the council will think it's a, a great idea, so I, I don't know why we would need to waste time to have another meeting just to potentially wrap something up that's probably going to get wrapped up anyway, so, those are my two cents.
Alder Person Zerflue?
I, I agree, and I understand, I mean, I understand where Alder Person Reom is coming from, but to me, whether old council or new council, they're still elected by, by the, by the residents to, you know, decide what they decide, so I don't, to me, it seems not a waste of time, but I don't, I don't know that it's necessary.
Other requests to speak? Uh, seeing no requests to speak, is there a motion anybody wishes?
Can I ask a question?
Alder Person Zerflue?
Is there some type of business, though, where we want to have one earlier, like maybe a limited, you know, agenda, is there a, I mean, was that why it was on there, or?
Well, I think, frankly, I didn't want to get to the Reorg meeting and hear, hear about how we didn't give them the opportunity to, to discuss whether to have a meeting or not, and I wanted to make sure that everyone understood, but I, no, I, there's not any, I mean, what used to happen four or five years ago and before was that they would do it on the same day, you would have an old council and then cake and coffee, and then the new council, and they would just organize and, you know, choose membership and so on, but then we realized that that was, that was not appropriate, that was illegal to, for the, because the old council does not, you know, those members did not have any authority to be elder persons on that day, so that's why it kind of is a shift, and, and I think then there's, you know, but I recall that last year you did not have that meeting, but, and I, if you defeat it at this point, or, or don't ask for an extra meeting, then I, I don't think I'm going to keep putting on the agenda unless Mr. Reom specifically, specifically asks for it, so.
Sounds good, I'm not necessarily taking cake and coffee off the table, though.
Alder Person Coath?
Thank you, your honor. I think that this is Tom's item, and Tom should be able to speak about it, but I think what we're forgetting is, we don't even know if we're going to be able to have a council meeting in April, because we just voted 30 minutes ago to uphold the mayor's declaration for emergency abilities, and I honestly think that any future council meeting should be talked about, about what we're going to do.
be talked about, about what we're going to do, kind of like what Joe said, if we're going to have a special council meeting in the future, if that's going to come out along with the committee meetings, but at this time, we don't even know if we're going to be able to meet in April on our regularly scheduled council meeting or not, so there's really no action I think we could take on it at, at this time, and I, I think if we have the essential business taken care of, we should probably consider adjourning at some point in time, based on recommendations that have been laid out for everybody.
Did you have anybody, did you have a motion in any of that?
If we have no other essential business items, I would make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn by Coath, is there a second? Second by Zerflu. Move into discussion, are there any requests to speak? Generally, we don't do requests to speak on adjournment, but I guess Alderperson Blazer, you've got?
Yeah, I was just going to say that, I don't know, I have, have an HR committee report that has wage increases for DPW, and I think, or dealing with, I'm sorry, not wages, but how we're going to handle a longevity and an issue there that would be nice to get resolved, but we can vote as it is. I'm just going to vote no, that's why.
Seeing no further requests to speak, the motion is to adjourn our meeting. Please cast your ballots. Tiebreaker in here, my gosh. I guess, just as a point of clarification, by the order that was passed this evening, and desire to quick, fairly quickly work out and ability to meet via electronic means, and, and to honor Alderperson Rayo's request to actually cancel tonight's meeting, of which I didn't feel comfortable doing, because majority of you were able to be here, I will, I will agree to adjourn, but for the purposes, again, of hopefully scheduling something very, very soon where everyone can participate, so. It'd be the under the remote, right? The remote conditions that were approved here this evening.
So, motion carried, four ayes, three nays.
All right, we stand adjourned. Thank you all for being here, and we'll talk very soon.